I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the December board meeting, regular board meeting. At this time it is public comments for agenda items. I don't have any yellow cards. So we're going to move on to Ms. Jolene Banks, our business manager for Truth and Taxation.
Okay. Truth and taxation meeting for the year. We talked about a little bit about truth and taxation law. We discussed the actual revenues and expenses for last year and the budget for this year. Discuss a little bit on the background for property taxes, the proposed property tax levy and the taxes payable for this coming year, and then a lot of time for public comments. So this is all based on property tax law back in 1988. Seasonal recreational properties were removed from the district's referendum market value tax base in 2001. Instead of paying property taxes directly to school districts or on school district behalf, it goes to the state and then the state allocates it back to school districts. Counties are required to send out proposed tax statements based on preliminary tax levies by county, cities, townships, and schools and any other taxing jurisdictions within their boundaries. And most of us jurisdictions are required to hold a truth and taxation meeting prior to authorizing the final levy. Again, we will touch base, we are required by law to touch base on prior year actuals, current year budget, and then the proposed property tax amounts with any big differentials between prior year and current year. The final levy amount must be certified no later than December 28th. We'll actually do that tonight. And when making a motion to certify, we'll need the exact dollar amount when you're making the motion. And then again, we do allow time for public comments. So this is a blip, we actually submitted this with our truth and taxation notices. So it's the breakdown of our prior year fund balances with revenues in and out, actual fund balances as of June 30th, 2022, and then the budgeted revenues and expenditures with projected fund balances for 2023. The general fund constitutes Fund One, Fund Three, and Fund Five, so transportation and operating capital are lumped in as well. Because the general fund is our biggest amount, you'll notice that it takes off 87% of our overall budget. Expenses as well, 88% of the overall budget. And because it's such a large portion of it, we'll break it down a little further. Revenue comes from three different pools of funds. Local dollars or anything that comes off of our property tax levy or any gate fees or sports and activity fees, things of that nature that are coming from local sources with no state or federal ties. State is the largest percentage at 79%. That is based on population, our student population, with general education aid and special education aid being the largest portions of those. And then federal funds, the current year has quite a bit more federal funds only because there's still COVID money coming through on the federal dollars. General fund expenses broken down by program areas, object areas I should say. Salaries and benefits account for 76% of the general fund. And then a little background on how we determine the tax rate. The city county assessors determine the market value for each parcel in the district boundaries, in their city or county boundaries. The legislature, the state legislature sets the formula for tax capacity. And the county auditor uses that formula to determine the tax capacity for each parcel and then the district as a whole. The state legislature sets formulas for each levy category. There are something like 40-plus categories and not all districts qualify for all levy categories. MDE then uses that state formula to determine the school district levy amounts. The school board will adopt a proposed amount based on levy figures submitted to the state in September. The county will use those proposed amounts to draft the proposed property taxes statements that go out to taxpayers in the district. And then at the December meeting, we finalize the dollar amount. You are paying property taxes to multiple jurisdictions on your property, county, city, state, or county, city, township, school district, special districts inside cities. Each jurisdiction sets its own tax levy as determined by limits and state laws, we already said. And the amount of taxes on each property are impacted by various things. It could be changes in your population. It could be changes, especially as a school district, your enrollment changes drastically on your property tax levy. It could be individual property values or it could be property values as a whole. So regardless of whether your property went down in value, if your district as a whole went up, you may still see an increase in property taxes. The county sends out the tax bills, collects the money from each property owner, and then distributes it back to the jurisdictions that need it. There are maximum amounts set on all 40 of those, 40-plus of those levy categories. And it's set either by state law or voter approval. MDE will calculate the detailed levy limits for each district. And on the MDE website, it's posted the levy certification report. It is currently sitting at 39 pages of exciting calculations, so if anybody needs a copy, it's out there. One big shift that happened with property taxes recently was the egg to school law. This was a big pass for especially districts in the southern portion of the state because it gave agricultural land a property tax credit from the state side on school district taxes dealing with voter-proof bonds. So rather than these people paying, rather than agricultural owners paying huge amounts of money on all of their agricultural lands for these property tax bonds, they get discounts. It has been phased in. This coming tax year is the last amount of phase in, and it will be 75, or I'm sorry, 70% credit on those properties. Our district is roughly 10% agriculture and timber property, so 10% of the property's got a pretty big reduction on our debt service levy. There are two different pots of funds. Referendum market value is the seasonal, is all of your residential properties and your commercial properties are taxed at the residential rate. It does not include ag land besides the house garage and one acre. It does not include seasonal rec properties. Net tax capacity is everyone in the district. The reason that this makes a difference for us is PRB is 45% seasonal rec and 10% ag. That means 55% of our properties get taken out for the property or for the levies that hit only referendum market value. This is a fun graphic that came from the MASA presentation, so some of you may recognize it. Thank you Tiffany Guston at MSBA. She put this together, but it kind of gives you a graphic of why your property taxes might not necessarily match what your immediate neighbor's property taxes are doing. So you may all live in Cass County, but my house might be on Maple Township and my neighbor's house might be in the next township. We may both be in Maple Township, but they might be Pequot School District, I might be Pine River. They might have a whole bunch of ag land, mine is homestead. So it's kind of a, you know, just because your neighbors doesn't necessarily mean you're all in the same boat. Again, the process, early September, MDE puts out the 39 pages. I take it and condense it into one page of numbers and give it to you guys so you can see the proposed property taxes. We give that to the county, the county sends out the statements. Late this year it felt like, but they definitely got out by the deadline. And then the December meeting today has to happen anywhere in December, but it must be certified by December 28th. So our levy for this year, 1 million in the general fund, 114,000 in the community service fund. Debt service levy is at 554. Those cover the bond payments on our bonds for a total levy of 1.713. The difference between these two categories, a decrease of 180,000 in the general fund is the bulk, is the majority of our decrease for a total decrease of 176,000 or 9.35%. When we certified in September, we did have the maximum amount on our levy, and that is the number that's listed on your screen. So that's what went on on proposed property tax statements. The biggest changes in that general fund are local optional revenue, reemployment, and long-term facility maintenance. Local option revenue is based on enrollment and property values. And because the levy system uses estimates and then it cleans it up as we go, the COVID years hit us hard. So there's a lot of fluctuations happening on cleanup to where the estimates were put in versus actuals coming through. And those should shake out over the next year or two. Reemployment is based on actual unemployment costs reported by the district. And through COVID, the state was delaying payments on unemployment to schools. So again, lots of adjustments happening as we go forward. LTFM is also based on enrollment and property values. And then it also takes what you spent in LTFM and what you were allocated in LTFM and then does a true-up correction in each levy. Maximum levy by tax category, this is the breakout with the referendum market value versus net tax capacity. Again, next, net tax capacity is every property in the district. RMV eliminates those agriculture and seasonal rec properties. Any additional resources on questions for property taxes can be directed to the auditor treasurer offices at Cass and Corralling Counties. And the Department of Revenue also puts their property tax refund form up on the website. It should be posted after the end of the year, and you can file that with your income taxes and get a tax break on your property taxes. Any comments?
Thanks, Jolene.
Thank you.
You crushed your fingers. We're plugging it into the new machine, next machine. Did you want me to wait to call it before you see if it comes up on the screen? All right, we're moving on to spotlight and education, effective school framework. We've got some people here from Sourcewell, and they're going to walk us through a presentation, we think.
John can get to the slideshow. There we go. We have Cindy Swanson here tonight. Cindy is our district partner with Sourcewell, who has been working with us now the past couple of years and helping us work on our curriculum and alignment, HRS, quite a few partnerships. And when Sourcewell went out for looking for schools to be a pilot project for this, this was something that really interested me because it really aligned a lot with the work that we were doing as a school board with our strategic plan. It aligned with the work that we've been doing with our curriculum alignment and in the conversations we were having with Cindy. So I was very pleased when we were selected as one of the pilot sites. Staples Motley is the other pilot site for Sourcewell. And it really is a working relationship in that it is a new endeavor for Sourcewell. And so they are looking for as much feedback from us in the process as we are looking for expertise and guidance from them. And we are beginning this process, kind of jumping with both feet tomorrow. We have a meeting which is working with our core team before we head on out to our building level teams for this. And Cindy, I'm going to turn it over to you so that you can explain the whole process that we'll be going through. And just give me a nod when you want me to click the button.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for having me here tonight. On your agenda, you have Aaron Sinclair, one of the other district strategy partners mentioned, and we just thought, you know, one of us is probably enough for you to hear from tonight. But Aaron will be with me tomorrow as we work with the administrative team and start this process. So thanks for having me here. It's been just really a pleasure to be working with your administrative staff and some of your teachers for a little over the past year. It feels like I, from very first meeting, that I was just welcomed on board and it's been a real joy. So I was really pleased that Pioneer Vac is applied to be part of this pilot and looking forward to the next steps with it. So I do want to share a little bit more about it here tonight. And so with that, John, you can go on the next slide. Some of you are pretty familiar with Sourcewell, and I thought it would be really helpful just to give a little bit of a high-level picture of, you know, what we do at Sourcewell and who we are. So Sourcewell is one of Minnesota's nine service cooperatives. And the statute around service cooperatives is there, and so I just wanted to highlight a couple of the pieces. So one of our roles is to perform planning on a regional basis, and so we serve five counties, Cass, Corralling, Todd, Morrison, and Wadena Counties. And really, the goal of service cooperatives is to help members accomplish goals that they have a hard time maybe doing themselves, but can do better as a collective in the region. And so, for example, some of the things, as John mentioned, that we do is provide support to schools with curriculum and staff development. Some of you are familiar with our cooperative purchasing. We have a health risk management, health insurance pool. So there are multiple things that we do. My role is with the education department specifically. So I work with schools on continuous improvement. And then as your district partner, I also serve as that liaison to Sourcewell and can connect you with questions that you have. So for example, about the board and things like that. Next slide, please. So a couple of years ago, we really started to want to take a look at what is the impact that we're having with our members. And so we started reforming our education service model. And this is kind of a complicated view, but our goal with this is to really be formalizing the partnerships that we have with our members, being more systematic with the services that we provide, and really working to, as you see at the top of what we call our rocketship, measuring our impact. And so the Effective Schools Framework is one of the ways that we're going about trying to have a better handle on our investment. Is it working for you? And is it really, are we putting our resources where they're making the most difference for schools and for our students especially? And so with that, the Effective Schools Framework was born. And the whole idea behind this framework is that we're hoping this process will bring clarity to schools about what's working and to help them identify some of those pieces that may need some improvement. So much like you do with high-reliability schools, and this framework is a little bit larger than the high-reliability schools and encompasses more areas. Just like with your HRS work, a pivotal part of this process is building in those improvement cycles. And so really taking a look at what information do you have about all of the operations in your school and what needs attention so that we can keep getting better over time. So we have an advisory council that represents, I think, at least half of our member school districts. And so a variety of superintendents, principals, assistant superintendents, teaching and learning directors come together monthly to give us information, feedback on the services that we've been providing and also on the services that schools need. And so we put those people to work to help us build out this framework. And so what I'm going to share with you today is a result of that collaboration. As John mentioned, we have two schools that have agreed to be a part of the pilot with us this year. And so I just wanted to share a little bit about some of the benefits to the pilot. First of all, the pilot benefits both Sourcewell and the region by giving us better information about what we're doing that's making an impact and about things that we need to improve. By having this consistent language around what's effective in schools, we all can be talking the same language. And so some of these things you'll see seem like vague terminology, but when we can work together with other schools to define what do you mean by that, it helps us to work better together. So for you as a district and for your individual schools, as John mentioned, it was really timely around your strategic planning last spring. And we're hoping that this framework and the work within it will help inform and complement your strategic plan with hopefully some specific action steps that you can take to realize those goals that have been born out of your strategic planning. And so with that, we are asking districts to make some commitments around some time, some dedication and prioritizing of time, their participation. It really involves mostly your leadership teams, so both at the district level and at the school level as well. We really are asking for schools to provide us the honest feedback so that we can continue to make this better and better and make sure that it really is having the impact that we're hoping it will. And the communication process so that your administrators are letting all of your stakeholders know what they're learning through this process and how it can help all of us to grow. And part of this pilot, we're hoping to be able to take a few members of your school on a school site visit to a model school. And so we would help locate a school that maybe is having some success in an area that you identify that we can go see what's being done in other places that we can learn from as well. So on our end, we have some commitments that we're also making to you. One is to facilitate the process. As John mentioned, tomorrow, Aaron and I will be coming and spending the bulk of the day with your district leaders digging into the work, which I'll explain a little bit more. We'll be providing some reports about that work and providing some tools to process the information that you're gathering through that process. And then also we'll help identify that model school. I already did make a reference, and John did too, to the high-reliability schools framework. What you've learned by engaging with the HRS framework is really a similar process that we're doing, which is looking at what's going on in your school system right now, what needs attention, and also what's going well so that you can make sure that you are continuing to replicate those things that are having positive impacts. You can go ahead. I think that one does a step-by-step, John. So what is the Effective Schools Framework? This is the graphic that we've designed that explains the Effective Schools Framework. Essentially, there are two sets of components that we've outlined. One of those sets is the foundational conditions. Just as it says, they lay the foundation. I like to think of it kind of as an infrastructure, that if those things are not in place and really solid, it makes it really difficult for the direct supports that you're providing for students to have the impact that you want them to have. So oftentimes, when we do take a look at what's happening in schools, our focus is on those student supports because that's really where we spend the majority of our resources and our time. Sometimes it's hard to remember that if those foundational conditions are not in place, if those railroad tracks aren't laid, you can't get the train down the tracks. And so this first phase of our project will be taking a look at the foundational conditions that are listed there. So those would be around transformational leadership. That means the type of leadership that's needed to make changes where changes are needed. Intentional strategy, which again, you've just engaged in a big piece of that with your strategic planning. It also involves looking at your data, making decisions based on that data, and then that continual monitoring of what you're seeing. Collective efficacy is the idea that your staff has the skills that it needs and also the belief in themselves that they can actually make that difference for students that you're hoping to make. So that's a big part of what we know works in schools. And then operational excellence is things like, you know, your finances and your buildings and those kinds of things that you know are in operations. So again, as I said, phase one will be around those foundational conditions. Phase two will specifically address those integral student supports. And that will happen when we get done with phase one. We haven't put a timeframe on it yet because we're not really sure how long phase one is going to take.
And tomorrow, we're focusing on the intentional strategies, the collective efficacy, and operational excellence is kind of our target for tomorrow.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. So this is a very high-level view of the process itself. And so tonight's presentation is part of our kickoff, which is just giving you the information about what this is about. There will be some information that your administrators will be sharing with your staff as well as part of that communication plan. Tomorrow will be the first step in that second box, which is the data collection. We're going to be taking a look at what information do you have that already tells you how healthy these conditions are in your school. We will be also selecting some survey questions with the team if there are places that need more information to be gathered. When all of that information is collected, the school leadership teams will be involved in a self-evaluation process to identify where are their strengths and where are there some opportunities for growth. And then we'll get to that planning stage. Once you've identified those strengths and those potential gaps, we'll be making some action plans. And then, as you know already with HRS, that ongoing monitoring piece of making sure you have a plan in place, to be taking a look at what's improving, how's it growing, you know, how do we stay stronger or strong, and how do we keep improving places where we need to grow? So with that, are there any questions? Do you want me to dig in a little deeper to that piece?
Oh, no, there's 31 more slides here. Slides up. No, no, no.
This is just, if people have more questions, we can dig a little deeper into the framework.
I'm just doing my job.
You were doing very well. And for not having this rehearsed, that was awesome. So I would just ask if that's a little bit more detail of the build-out of those four foundational conditions. And if you'd like, you know, John can always share that part with you too, if you'd like to dig in a little deeper. But I'm imagining that there's going to be some eye-wide conversation about these pieces as well, so.
Well, the things for you as a school board to let you know why I kind of went this direction with Sourcewell was I really love some of the things that they bring. I find that for some systems, reflection is very, very hard. Because when we reflect back and say how we're doing, we love to say, we're doing great. And we don't get to, what are we doing great? How are we doing it that's so great? What do we need to fix and work on? We don't get down to the hows and the whats very well. And so walking through this process, I think, is really going to get to the hows and the whats, and then you put it into an action plan, kind of a to-do list. What can we do right now? What can we do in a week, in a month, you know, a year down the line? So it doesn't just stay as a hypothetical conversation, wouldn't it be nice if we could do this? It's like, with our resources, with our personnel, what can we do right now to do that? So I'm really looking forward as we go through this process because I think it will help us guide along. So thank you for selecting PRB.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Collecting the data that you're doing tomorrow, do you already have like an area that you want to look at? Or is it just broad spectrum? And then from there, your self-reflection, what timeframe is that for, you know, you gave the teachers or everybody on there, what does that timeframe look like?
We're going to actually lean on the school to kind of determine what's reasonable. You know, my first guess is we're hoping to get through in that, in these four components, we're hoping to get through three of them tomorrow with that initial what do you have in place. We'll be working with the administrative team to finish out that fourth area. And then from there, there will be a survey that goes out to staff. We're thinking it'll take a couple of weeks for our team to turn that survey around. And then once that is in place, then we'll be putting it to the school level teams.
And we've kind of identified the leadership teams right now as the school level teams since they're already up and running, and we're hoping that we'd be introducing this all this to them by the second semester, which, you know, February. With that, as far as a timeframe, I think the admin team, as well as my wife, know that I'm pretty impatient that I would like it done yesterday.
It's not done yet.
But we're going to walk through the process and take the steps and stuff. There's just so much, I mean, just right in operational excellence, if you take a look at that, and so many different things to take a look at, and they really are integral to. to each other. So I think we're going to have some really good conversations.
Okay, thanks. So stay tuned, I guess.
Is that staff, is that staff survey going to be an online component or?
I believe it will be delivered through a Survey Monkey.
Okay.
We don't always have the, I mean, maybe it's gotten better, but we haven't always had the best response to these survey things. So is it going to be more of a mandatory thing than a, hey, can you stop and fill this thing out type of deal?
Well, it's going to be one of those things that we're, we're not going to be monitoring on who filled it out and who, who didn't. But we'd probably be sending out a lot of reminders because with any survey, the, the greater participation you get, the more accurate your results are with that, so.
And that's all I'm getting at is, I don't care, I mean, but if you have 81 surveys that you're looking for and 22 of them come in, I guess I would hammer out more surveys because we need that. I mean, and that's the biggest thing as we build these things and all the stuff that we're doing is the information is only as good as the information that we're putting into the Rubics, right? So if we're not getting the right Rubics or the right information and everybody just stands silently in the background and expects something to change, we could put you in a position, we could put you, bring you in here, but the Rubics doesn't change if they don't give us the information that we're looking for.
And that's why we also want to make sure that we get it out to the building levels because I think if it just stayed at the administrative district office level, to me, eh, it's one of those things. You know, that this is going to be something that out at the building level, because it is going to do, impact the work that they're doing with Rachel and the curriculum area. It's going to be work with the feedback that they give Kevin in the technology, infrastructure areas of student management. I mean, it's going to hit, it's going to hit it all.
Yeah, a couple of things that we're doing to support that because we know that's important. And people get a ton of surveys and they get asked for a lot of information. And so right now, we're having some people on our team test out the survey to find out, one, how long does it take? And two, were there any challenges that they had answering those questions? So that your administrative team will be selecting questions from that survey, so it won't necessarily be that we send out the entire survey. It'll be selected based on what they need more information on. And so when that's sent out, we will say, this is about how long it will take you to take it. And then two, what, what some schools do when they do surveys is give people time that's already in their time to do that. So a time on an in-service day or something like that where it's already blocked out. And that does tend to increase that response rate, so.
And to go along with Wanda's question, so one of the things that, the questions that popped into my head is, okay, so we've got foundational conditions and then how long does this take? And then we're pulling in the students and we're pulling in the teachers. And so my head automatically went to, okay, so this is year one and this is year two. That's not how this is designed. And so like that's, like when you ask that question, that's where my brain went because that's what my brain did with this too. And I think the thing that I love about this is this is going to take however long it takes us. And, and the process is however long it takes us to go through the process and however long it takes us to work through this as a district and to get to where we need to be is how long it's going to take.
So it could be revolting, like it's, it's not like an end, it's just revolving?
Exactly. That's right. It's setting you up for continuous improvement. And that's part of what we hope to build into this, which is some, some internal capacity to make those continuous improvement cycles the way business is done and create those habits around that. Exactly.
Spoken like the true curriculum director who's in charge of the pacing guide, superintendent says, I want it done yesterday.
It's a nice balance to have, the ass and the brakes. I'm just telling you, so. And I tend to be a little bit more in the brakes, but I, I'm growing better at this point. I can step on the gas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Rachel, let me get this to you before.
Mine's in my pocket, just in case.
Moving on to item three, approving the agenda that I'm including. Motion by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Katie. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Approve the minutes for the regular board meeting and the special meeting on 11:07 and 11:17.
So moved.
Roger? Motion by Roger.
Second.
Second by Leslie. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I would assume that Rick is busy down in the gym.
I have.
Do you have some things highlighted for him?
Yep, I have things for the elementary and the high school. If you want, I'll just say these until I do my report and it's kind of all goes together.
Fantastic. Jolene, anything other than?
I'll save mine for the work session.
Okay. Cindy?
Oh.
Carl? I'm sure you'll touch on anything he needs to do there. And yours, community education. And Tim, athletics and activities.
He's in with the activities. It's one of those nights.
I want to work.
Yep. Technology and transportation.
Right now, just update for transportation, just same with our admin. Boy, the, the colds and the flus are going around. Our, you know, our, our bus drivers are hanging on there, but right now I'm the last administrator standing, so it's just that time of year. So everything's going well. Cherry's got things covered. The drivers are, I hear them radioing, wondering who can help out and pick up another activity route and stuff. So, so far, things are very good.
How did the CDL class go? Did we get a few licenses from?
We, we have not picked up a driver yet for the offer. We had some that took the classes, some that have some testing yet, but we have not picked up a driver yet.
I think Charity passed.
Charity did.
Our director, yes, our director.
All right. Well, moving on to five, three, then, that's you.
For my report and some of the, I included in my weekly message out to you, but Chris and Rachel and I attended an MREA conference just a few weeks ago and really attended some very good sessions. And part of the sessions had us starting thinking about what can we be doing, taking a look at our, our high school schedules here. Because as the board developed a strategic plan with the community, part of it was trying to offer as many electives as we could for our kids and the career pathways. And so right now, we're very much in the exploratory phase. So I don't want anybody worried that we're going to go and do a major change right now in the planning. But we are taking a look at, at certain schedules and setups such as trimesters, going to semesters, going to different flexible days, and how can we give our kids the work experience, the pathway experience, plus meeting all the state requirements for that? And so we're looking at some different systems and how can we maximize the resources that we have and the people that we have to give them that? Because we're always going to be working within a finite amount of budget room that we have. So trying to maximize the most that we can. And that's part of the framework that we're going to go through is do we have everybody in the right spots and the system set up to maximize that for the students? We also have a career pathways team all set up that Rachel, Mr. Halverson, and we have three or four teachers, I believe, that are on there, as well as our guidance counselor, going up to, working with Sourcewell, just trying to find some pathways. And spoke with a few of them that went last week to that meeting and they were very excited and had some really good conversations. But what everybody said they were excited about is we have some steps that we can take right now. They may be small, but again, we want to start moving things out of the, the what-if realm and start moving them into workable plans. Our instructional rounds are up and running with Mrs. Hanekin, and we are back in the classrooms where we, due to COVID, we're videotaping a lot of those lessons and meeting in the conference room. So the teachers are back in classrooms observing other teachers and coming out and meeting some good feedback. We have that as a requirement for all of our staff that they need to do at least one instructional round throughout the year because we want them to be seen in other instructional models reflecting on the practices that they use moving forward. And then the high school also had their quarter award ceremonies. At the elementary, I just handed that one off. They are also doing, testing window is opening up here in the middle of December and going through January. So that's going to be our, our first real look at how we're doing on those assessment goals that we have established because we had the baseline set in the fall. This is our first look to see, are we getting the growth that we're hoping to get with some of the new changes that have been implemented, especially in our primary reading program that we went with SOR that Erica and, and Cherry presented a few meetings ago. Our catalyst coaching is still going on and we have 22 staff that have participated either in a consultation or an observation or attempted certification so far this school year, which is really good since we're only about a third of the way through the school year. And I think one of the more interesting meetings was one that Jolene and I took last week with, with Cass County that we're excited on is just met with a county administrator. Nothing's finalized, nothing done yet, but they seem very supportive of our health station office that we have developed and going forward in the spring to help us out possibly with paying for some of that. And so they have an application process that'll be opening in January that in consultations with them, it seemed like we have everything that they are looking forward to, to support that and would gain their support as it goes forward to all the commissioners. The application opens up at January 17th and we should hear by about February 7th if, if we are awarded some of their extra dollars as well for that project. But when we met with them, it was just a very great opportunity to have a partnership the way that we have it designed for the separate access for any future things that the county might need down here as far as health services go. So that was very encouraging and, and helped us with the extra costs, so.
Fantastic.
I do have a couple of questions. You know, just planning and you talked about maximizing, you know, trimester and all of that. Those extracurricular classes, electives, would that help with those seniors maybe going to a specific college or university that they have all the credits that they need? Are we looking into that as well?
Well, part of what we're looking into, and we just had our second meeting on this today, is we also need to take a look at the credits that are required to graduate from Pine River Agribusiness. Right now, we offer 48 credits. It only takes 44 to, to graduate, which in essence gives four credits there that eh, don't make them very meaningful. And I think that, you know, we're kind of wasting some time with those kids and we want to make sure that all the credits that we have are meaningful to them. So it would give us an opportunity, but that is something that we have to look at as far as graduation requirements. But then taking a look at, coming right down to what are the passions, the expertise, the licensure areas of our, of our teachers, of our staff? Because right now, we are very grade level track orientated, that there's not, not a lot of flexibility there. Kevin First, our tech director, did an analysis on, on things that basically by time our students are, Rachel, help me out if I'm wrong, leaving ninth grade, their future courses are almost already set for them.
Yeah.
You know, with that. And that's something that, as we look at creating those career pathways and those opportunities, we can't have a set course for them coming to ninth grade. We, we have to have some opportunities for them to explore and to check some things out. And so we're taking a look to see how can we get the state standards, which is the state's requirements for, to match with our local graduation requirements as, as well. And so that's where it's like, okay, we only have so many hours out of the day. How many hours of the day are instructional minutes? Of those instructional minutes, what's the best way that we can get the instruction to the kids, you know, whether it be different periods, like scheduling trimesters, semesters, quarters? That's what we're trying to put that formula together and come back to you with some recommendations saying, I think this is a way that we can maximize what we have.
So is that going back to that question where did we fail one of our graduates that went on to college and then didn't qualify or?
It's just, I just want to make sure that we're touching all bases. If these kids are going to go off to college and they pick a career, are we giving them all the classes that they, and credits that they need to attend those universities and colleges?
A challenge that smaller schools will always have, and they really covered this very well at that MREA conference that we went to, is that we need to sit down, and school's right back to effective school framework, and redefine what does it mean to be ready? We have groups of students that are going in a lot of different directions. We have a group of students that, once they graduate, they're going to the workforce. But once they graduate, they're going to the military services. Once they graduate, they're going to a specialized program, you know, whether it be for an AA degree, a trade school, an apprenticeship, they're going that way. And then some are going to the four-year college. We need to prepare and have a system that prepares them for any track that they go to.
Thank you.
You call the elephant in the room or not? Are we looking at some period days at all or?
Don't know.
Okay.
Don't know, but I mean, we, we will have to have those conversations with our, our unions, our employee groups, the school board, because we do have contracts that are very limiting on, on how changes can, can make. Because do we, do we need to increase the instructional time? Do we need to somehow realign things so that we're able to offer standards that the state requires in more classes than what is currently offered so they can still get that opportunity in there? That's why I'm, I'm not going to say, boom, here it is. We got, we have a lot of research and a lot of studying to do. For example, Rachel and I met today and I had her send out an email to her group that she works with, with all the area curriculum directors, saying, let me know how many credits you require for graduation, how many credits is each class worth, and not only how many credits it takes to graduate, but how many credits do you have available to your students? Because is our ratio good as far as offerings? Do we offer enough? How do we increase that offering?
Thank you.
Okay. Enrollment report, extra dollars, we're good with all that?
Yep.
Okay. Consent calendar. You motion as second, approve the consent calendar. Motion by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Discussion on the school calendar for 2324.
I would like to try and get the calendar to you by December so that we can be looking at it. And so we developed the calendar and sent it out to the leadership teams in both buildings, our union heads throughout to take a look at it and see if they had any concerns with it. We wanted to make sure we were offering the same number of student contact days, we had the same teacher contract days, our PLC requirements and in-service days. And the calendar that I present before you right now fits all of that. We had a couple of other goals in mind that we wanted to schedule, if at all possible, an in-service day at the end of a quarter so that we had some time to do some training with teachers as well as some time for them to take a look at doing their grade booking and, and recording. The biggest change that you'll notice on there is our spring break is a week later than it typically has been with that. And that's because Easter falls right in there. So if we kept it where traditionally is, we would have a week's vacation, we would come back to school for a few days, and then we'd have off for Good Friday and the Easter break. So this puts it all together and still allows us to have graduation on Friday, May 24th, the Friday before Memorial Day, which it has been the past few years.
Second by Ryan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Discussion on the school calendar for 2324.
I would like to try and get the calendar to you by December so that we can be looking at it. And so we developed the calendar and sent it out to the leadership teams in both buildings, our union heads throughout to take a look at it and see if they had any concerns with it. We wanted to make sure we were offering the same number of student contact days, we had the same teacher contract days, our PLC requirements and in-service days. And the calendar that I present before you right now fits all of that. We had a couple of other goals in mind that we wanted to schedule, if at all possible, an in-service day at the end of a quarter so that we had some time to do some training with teachers, as well as some time for them to take a look at doing their grade booking and, and recording. The biggest change that you'll notice on there is our spring break is a week later than it typically has been with that. And that's because Easter falls right in there. So if we kept it where traditionally is, we would have a week's vacation, we would come back to school for a few days and then we'd have off for Good Friday and the Easter break. So this puts it all together and still allows us to have graduation on Friday, May 24th, the Friday before Memorial Day, which it has been the past few years.
Any discussion? Moving on to board meeting, dates and times.
For the board meeting, date and time is just our, January is the reorganization and we're supposed to have that done by the first available Monday, which would be January 9th. So just, and then, then we'll set the calendar from there, but we just need to set January 9th as a.
Board meeting?
And that comes up in the action items later. And then also, board meetings for next year. We've had some very short board meetings and so, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. I'm, I'm just saying when we have, we have two a month. We have the working session and the regular business session. I guess I'm coming to you and just recommending that we schedule one board meeting a month and then we could add special board meetings throughout as needed with it because just my recommendation to you for your time and scheduling so that sometimes you're popping in here and, and we've met for 20 minutes, 30 minutes, it's up to you.
Well, I mean, we, I was going to bring weight and bring it up after the first of the year, but I guess we can talk about it now, you know, with that is, we like to hear from our people. And predominantly, we hear from Chris and Rick and Jolene. And Cindy's always here, so we always have Cindy. But, you know, hearing from that transportation director, the building engine grounds, you know, Sue was in at the beginning of the year and we talked to Sue, you know, about, okay, so we had some concerns there. How, how are, how are those things? Just to check it. And maybe it's a work session or maybe it's a board meeting or wherever they feel comfortable. I know Jill would shoot me if I said that I wanted her to come and speak at, at the board meetings and work session works better for Jill. But hearing from some of these directors, I know I get some questions from you guys throughout, you know, reaching out for them and we get those facilitated, but talking to them, you know, Rachel's here, we, we could talk about it. We, we have a lot of excitement that I hear from around the area districts of what's going on, but having that little bit more.
Face time.
Face time, there you go, with our, with our directors and, and hearing from them and concerns and, and good things that are going on. Well, I don't know that, I personally like the work sessions. I know our work sessions are a little, and the comment in, in the community is, your board sessions are, or your, your school board meetings go very fast. Well, that's because we do a lot of legwork and we do a lot of discussion in the work session. So there's not a lot of talk at it. I'm, I'm not saying we need one every month, but I would be remiss if I said I don't want, I don't want to look at having them every month. So, you know, two a quarter, you know, do we really need one? You know, we can discuss that at the board meeting, you know, is there really some stuff that's coming up or if there's some, yeah, I'd like to dive into, especially with all the things that are going on with curriculum, you know, as we're doing, you know, pilot programs and, you know, and, you know, things that are going on. I, I would just like to, to stay with it. That's just my two cents.
I like to hear from everybody from the buildings, you know, it'd be nice if they were here more so we can ask them questions. And I know we get reports and things, but it's not the same as hearing from them.
Can I ask a question on that? Are you talking about from the directors or are you talking about from employees overall? Because one of the things that haven't been said no to yet is the spotlight's in education. I think the teachers really have appreciated kind of coming in and sharing what they are doing in their spots. And usually I try to have one a month that, I mean, I can, you know, increase some of those activities and stuff to hear from, you know, our knowledgeable teams and our different grade levels and departments that are, are doing some things. There's a lot of things happening.
And it's great to hear from all of them. Yes, I wouldn't mind hearing more from all of them, you know, whether it been robotics, how, how are they doing and just hearing in general, because I think that our community likes to hear it too. And a lot of people really listen into our meetings. And so to showcase all of that more.
No, that, that's very easy for me to do because I, I enjoy hearing them because I can sit here and tell you what's going on and, and the seven of you might be saying, oh, here goes John again. But it's a lot better to hear from them so that you can hear the firsthand when they bring in their little video clips of the kids doing it.
Yes.
Definitely.
So we're ninth at 5:30, is that what we're looking at?
Uh, we should probably wait till we get down to that action item.
I just wanted to make sure that that's what we were looking at.
That's the first Monday.
Okay. Superintendent evaluation.
That is.
On the 19th.
Yep. And that one is just kind of planning out that if you want to get the feedback and then we review it on the 19th and close session, but then it does need to be reported back out to the, the public and we can do that if you want to do that on that January 9th and provide a summary.
Okay.
If that works.
Moving on to the action items, certify and pay levy, item 8.1. My computer shows. Jolene, do you have that? I don't have the. Okay. Fingers on it.
I have the actual number.
At 1, 840 or the 121509?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, he's got two numbers he's pointing at me here.
You had the total, so I was trying to write it down ahead of time. Which one?
So you have 1,713,000.
745.
745, 60.
Say it again.
Ryan's got it. Go ahead, Ryan, make the motion.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Certify the levy.
Certify the levy at 1.713745.60.
Second.
Got a motion by Ryan and we got a second by Katie. Anybody want to discuss this number? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No, I just.
Motion carries.
I had one of those.
Pay the levy.
Is that Bobby here for a minute?
I had one of those questions, going back to the presentation, I'll ask you tomorrow.
Just happy I wrote right.
We will go ahead and set the time for, I need a motion for January 9th, 5:30 for the reorganization meeting, regular, regular board meeting to follow.
So moved.
Motion by Roger.
Second.
Second by Leslie and Ryan.
Things are tight.
We'll go second by Leslie. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Open forum to discuss any other business not before the board, on the agenda. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the meeting per Minnesota State law, 13D.03 subdivision 3 to close meetings in order to consider strategies for labor negotiations with School Service Employees Union, Local 284, 656.
We get a motion and second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can have a motion there. That's a good idea. Thanks.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Roger. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I think it's the cough drops. It's the only way I'm talking. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.